You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, I'll call today's, tonight's meeting to order. Would you all please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First off, I'll recite the college mission statement. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance the community and personal development in a student-centered environment. At this time, we'd ask that anybody would like to address the board of trustees, they can do so at this time. We're open for further comments. Seeing none, we'll move on. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes that you've been provided in your floor books, and I'll entertain a motion to approve at appropriate time.
I move.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll move on to completion of the agendas. So, item A, we have quite a few additions and corrections removed, so please review, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the agendas when you're ready.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll move on to reports to the trustees. So, Ms. Almendares, you have the floor.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. It is so good to see you guys once again. Mr. Chairman, President Volte, good evening. I want to make sure you guys hear me very well.
There you go.
I can't believe it's our last meeting of the semester, not of the year. I was telling Dr. Nowke, if it was of the year, I'm not ready to cry just yet. As always, you know, it's an honor for me to be here with you guys, and I can't, I mean, finals are here. I have one actually right after this meeting. I have two tomorrow, and, but I'm ready. I'm ready to keep going and start new things for next semester. So, but enough about me. Let's go ahead and give the reports. Peta Kappa had their new member induction on December 4th, and Dr. Jane here can tell us that it was a very successful night. The International Club, those of you that were interested about the Tamale's orders, you can speak to any club member about any, or Professor Estrella, they were taking orders to 10th, the 10th of December, and they're going to deliver those on the 13th, but they're also taking orders the 20th and the 27th, and those will be delivered the 23rd and 30th of this month. Their last meeting, their last executive board meeting was December 1st, and their last club meeting was December 4th. Art Club, they had their student art exhibition on Friday, then on November 30th, at the Little Theater Gallery, and it remained until December 10th. The Nerd Union, they had their successful game night on November 30th. Their Quiz Bowl got fourth place on their competition against Cowley College in Arc City. Choir, they have their new president, I believe it's actually their former president also, but she's still the same one, Catherine Ludlam. Their recital was on November 20th for vocal and instrument. Their concert was on December 2nd at Windhorse, and on Monday also at the Methodist Church, and they went caroling at Maynor of the Plains, Lester Say the Six. And last but not least, the Student Government Association, we had late-night breakfast at the Student Union Dining Hall yesterday, actually, at 10:00 PM, and I think breakfast for dinner is always a must. It's always great, right? And it was open to all DC3 students, and today we had a free massage, we were given free massages, not us, because we're not professionals, that would have been very weird. From 10:00 till all afternoon. And tomorrow will actually be our last club meeting, and we'll have a cute little party. But, yeah, that's pretty much all that we have for this whole semester. I wish you guys all Merry Christmas, Feliz Navidad, and a Happy New Year, Prospero Año Nuevo, and God bless you all. Have a great evening.
Good luck on your finals.
Yes. Good luck on your finals.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to trustees' report, and we usually always start over here, and you guys always steal their thunder, so I'm going to start with Dan.
I have nothing to report.
Kathy?
Well, I attended the KACCt conference on your behalf in Independence, Kansas, and our director, Linda Flynn, will be retiring, and she had a wonderful budget analysis for us and a financial statement, and is looking, and I asked the president if he wouldn't call, because they're wanting qualified presidents to help look for a replacement, and she was excited and would like to have somebody of your caliber to apply. They discussed the trustee survey. We all received a trustee survey on the Internet and filled it out, and so we had the results back, and I will have Carla run these off, but challenges and issues facing the colleges, and this was from the state of Kansas, and number one is funding, all over the state of Kansas it is. Number two is improving student access and success and completion, and number three, affordable and access for students. So those, we pretty well match every other community college in the state of Kansas on how we answered as trustees and our concerns, and the results we'll have run off. And then the other one is, I had a phenomenal time at the community college Christmas get-together, and the ugly sweater competition was hilarious, and I think the winners, or the winner was deserving of what, I mean, she was glammed out, and it was a lot of fun, and I enjoyed watching a breathtaking basketball game that had everybody up in the seats, and in our honoring of our, the Hall of Fame, it was very moving to hear what they all said about our college and where we're going and what it's meant and brought to them in their lives, so.
It's been a busy month for everybody. Top that one, Doctor.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say, I don't want to follow that, so I would just like to continue to thank everybody, and most importantly, listening to Linda talk with us, this brings back lots of fond memories of this time of year studying and cramming or, you know, finishing that last-minute paper, or hopefully, you know, I'm sure everybody else always was, you guys were probably all done a week ahead, but I maybe wasn't, so.
Those are fond memories?
Yeah.
They are now.
The test is every week now, it never quits. But, you know, I think that really, you know, helps us keep our focus on our mission here, which is those students, and so I'm really, it's exciting to hear that, and that's what they're here for. I mean, they spent all semester working diligently, and they're working hours and hours, and through the nights to nights, and through the week this week to get that last, you know, final, that last summation of what they've been working so hard for. So, you know, I think we keep them in our prayers this week, and in our thoughts tonight with our actions, so.
Okay. Maya?
I also attended the staff college party last Saturday night. Oh my gosh, what an exciting time that was. I, in the morning, attended the Hall of Fame. Another wonderful experience. Anyone who wasn't there, you missed a great time. I also attended the concert at the Methodist Church. We should be so proud of those young people, it's just amazing, and the people from the community who participate. And then, I'll just change this a little bit, I just want to say publicly, Kathy, sometimes a burden shared can lighten things, and so I want you to know that we all want to share your burden as time goes on.
Thank you.
And we love you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hampton?
I would say ditto to everything Maya said. I too was so pleased with the atmosphere at the party. People were enjoying each other and really having a wonderful time, and it was so good. Also, the Hall of Fame was really inspiring, and again, Linda, is she gone? She went to study.
She was really serious. She was going to.
All those things that Dr. Presley would just go wow over.
About how proud we are of the student body that we, it's just a real pleasure to be associated with them. I happened to catch, I happened to catch some interesting news items, and I want to just mention them quickly. Kansas University is cutting 150 positions because of financial stress, and they hope that they will eventually be able to replace them, but right now it's $20 million, serious situation for them. So we know that we aren't the only ones that worry about the funding, and as Kathy said, so does everybody else. And as you remember, there's a little college down the road called Barclay College, they have been accredited by HLC, so that means that we're going to have other competition for our Gen Ed students, even though they are primarily a theology school. In Wichita, WSU Tech's Wichita Promise Scholarship Program, individuals will have the opportunity to get trained for select high-command jobs with tuition and fees paid and a guaranteed job interview, and I'm sure you know about that. In Heston, they have a college of aviation, which I don't think I really had been aware of, but they have recently established a partnership with SkyWest Airlines, a passenger airline company that operates in partnership with Delta, United, American, and Alaska Airlines. So they are working hard into the aviation field. And then finally, Secretary Perdue of Ag has announced a one-USA internship opportunity for summer 2019 as part of the Federal Pathways Program. It's an internship program. So I thought those were interesting things that we need to be aware of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
I wanted to report a bit on the Leadership Congress in New York, since I wasn't at the last meeting. I did hand out some documents concerning the first day, I guess it was a pre-Congress Academy regarding policy guidance for fiscal health and management. I won't talk about that since I just handed out the materials, basically what I was, and I'll do that next time. The, I think, Vice Dean mentioned Wichita Promise Program, I'm not aware of that, but I am aware of the promise programs that started in Tennessee with the governor there, who I think was a former educator, made it a state goal to have all community college students have access to their community colleges without payment of tuition or fees, and I have no idea what kind of funding program or funding system that Tennessee has, but I do believe it was done with state money, not local money. Kathy sent out a situation on the Dallas Promise, she sent out what their handout was, and there again, one thing I noticed about that is that 80% of the Dallas County Community College students come from underserved populations, which I'm not sure what that means, but it sounds a lot like Dodge City's 443 situation, with at least 80%, I believe, receiving some type of aid for their schooling or school lunches, things like that, or probably level. The California was, they had one about the, I counted, I think, three of these, they had a very interesting program, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, and another one was a program where the president of LSU, the Secretary of Education of New Jersey, and somebody else, I forgot to write down. And they were, the president of LSU is, all of these people, extremely passionate about making this happen at the community college level, that students can have access, and apparently Linda Fund was talking about that, or KACCt, and they're, I'd say they're dedicated and passionate to opening the doors of student, opportunities for all students. And I think that Kansas has a fairly unique funding scheme, and I can't find anybody else, and I haven't done an exhaustive study, that actually gets virtually all of their funding from the local county. In California, they do it by district method, so they are, a lot of it's dependent upon state funding, and they're still getting this done, of getting donations and things of this nature. I think that we're extremely fortunate that we are locally funded, that the, I think we could easily make it happen, that within the next year, that all, or starting next year, that we could have open access to our college by the Ford County residents, where they would pay no tuition or fees. Actually, what we're doing now, I think that was the intent of all community colleges, the other 87 counties didn't want to participate, they all had a chance to join in, I guess, and join a, they could, some, another county could have joined us, but they were getting a better deal not doing that. So I hope that we work toward that, and I'll bring some more information from the one in California, but in how we can do it without, with even, under the financial problems we have. It's our funding, like I say, we get very little from the state, get most of it from the county, and I think this is what the county residents want, and I hope we can give it to them. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Can I address that?
Sure.
Carrie, thank you. I talked to Blake Flanders on Friday. Linda and I are familiar with a program that's being done all over the country, not Kansas. I think there's a part of it being done a little bit in Butler County, but what it's called, it's called early college high school. And what happens is, all of, all your students, and most of them are STEM students, most of them are student-sitter of minority or whatever, what they're able to do is get their high school and their college at the same time, and you've got a building located called St. Arizona Plains that's empty right now, and that would be an opportunity for us to do something like that. And visiting with state legislature works, possibly, because in Texas, what they do there is they pay, the state pays for it, as well as the, as well as the community pays for it, so it's, you get a little of state funding, as well as community pay for it, and the high school gets the money, and so does, so does college, but it really works out well. Most of those students will get a college, get a two-year diploma from a college before they get their high school diploma, and so it works out very well, and I've done two of those in the country, two of those in the state, and they work out quite well, and those are usually students that, I had at my last institution, the first year we had 68 students graduate with their pre-engineering, and 60 of those were pre-engineering, and all got scholarships to Texas State. So there's an opportunity for, and if you look on the, look on the map, Kansas is one of the few states that's not doing it. That's a, it's a Bill Gates and Del, and Lumina are the three institutions that are involved in it, and they, they give, they give seed money for it, but it's some, it's an opportunity for us to look at something like that, and that helps your minority and your populations like that. But it's amazing how wonderful it all works.
You know, and that's what I find strange about the fact that Kansas doesn't have any, because all you have, you don't have to convince anybody in the legislature for the model I'm looking at, all you have to do is convince the people local.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would, or Mr. President, I think it would be certainly in order for us to take the lead on promoting that. I believe that would be very.
All right. Thank you all for your comments. So, move on to other board of reports. So, Vice President Corrada, would you like to tee this up?
Certainly. I've invited Mike Webster, Director of Education Technology, to come and give us an update on the conversion from GenZ Bar. There were some questions last month, and I thought we might give him the floor to give us an update there. And also, there have been some questions about our findings from the HLC, so Dr. Cersei is here to answer, address that issue as well.
So, Mike, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. As Dr. Jane alluded to, I'm going to be giving you an update on our project to implement our new student information system called GenZ Bar EX. I'm going to first try to explain the process, I apologize if this is a little redundant, but the overall process is split into four different phases, which GenZ Bar calls training trips. The first of those training trips was an onsite live demonstration of the software, and as well as a discussion about each department's current processes, as well as we started talking about what's called pre-conversion data mapping. Now, I'll get into that later. The second training trip consisted of, again, onsite configuration of the actual software. We have the software installed on servers here, we have our own implementation and database, so GenZ Bar brings on their consultants, we meet with each department team, and they actually configure the software to work for their needs. This third phase of this is called Training Trip 3. That starts March 14th, and that is actual end-user training. We've configured the system, we've got a first initial pass of data in the system, and now we bring in all of our end-users, and we start training them on their day-to-day operations. The fourth training trip, scheduled to start in May, towards the end of May, this is going to include all those month-end processes, annual processes, or 1098-teens, for example, as well as report training for staff in each department to learn how to run reports out of the new system. Like I said, that starts May 21st, endatively, so far. That means our goal live at this point is October 7th of 2019, wood, that's if everything continues to go as smoothly as it has been. With that, we've, haven't run into anything major to impede any progress, we're on track, we're under budget thus far, so everything's been going really well that way. In conjunction with these training trips, we've also been doing and discussing data conversion mapping, and that is taking our data from our old system, mapping it so that we can put it into the new system. Our first data conversion pass, that's the very first time they take our old data and put into the new system, is scheduled for February 11th. Once they do that, they are expected to get back a report to us, which basically says, hey, these are all the issues that we found, how would you like to address them? We'll meet with all the module managers and teams, and we'll go through the report findings and make sure that we're getting in the stuff that we need to get. Our second data conversion is then scheduled for March, a third is scheduled for May, and then our final data conversion is scheduled for September 30th. Now, within each department, we're bringing in certain time periods of data. We're not just taking everything in the old system and putting it into the new system, because there's a lot of stuff in the old system that we frankly don't need to put into the new system. So, for example, the business office, and this really pertains to the details of a student general ledger, July 1st, 2016 and forward is our cutoff date. So everything from July 1st, 2016 and forward, we're bringing all those details in. If a student has a balance prior to that, we're just bringing in that balance. For the admissions office, we're converting everything July 1st, 2014 and forward for our registration, and this primarily is just transcript requests, July 1st, 2018 and forward. Student life, which is primarily just housing assignments, August 1st, 2018 and forward. Now, with any of the students' actual transcript information, their courses, their grades, et cetera, we will be bringing all of that information over to the new system. If, for example, the business office needs some transaction detail prior to July 1st, 2016, once we've gone live, we can still go back into the old system and get that level of detail for them.
You don't have to run due award?
No, not at all. Once we go live in October of next year, the, what's called the AS400, our current system, will be archived, pretty much just put it on a shelf, power down, and that's where it will stay. We are taking the database out of it and putting it into a virtualized database that we can then access. So if we do get those requests or information that we haven't converted, we can always go through the database and get that for whichever department needs it. So far, all departments, like I mentioned, were on task. The business office was a little delayed with their Training Trip 2s because of the magnitude of their changes, and we knew this was to be expected, not just because of staff transitions, but primarily because they will be changing their structure of general ledger account formats. And that brought a lot of discussion, a lot of good discussion, and we've got the results, so we're back on track with them. As these discussions and these training trips have naturally led to new processes and examination of old stuff that we've done, there has been some heated discussions, but nothing to impede progress thus far. Everyone in our meetings has been very excited to get started and rolling on this new project, so I've got to just say my thanks and gratitude for everyone involved. Everyone in the department has been so gracious with their time, because this has been a lot of commitment on them. They've had homework assignments, they have had to be stuck in meetings, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, even Friday, so it's been a lot of time that everyone has been very gracious with, and so I really do appreciate it. Right now, GenZ Bar is working remotely on our stuff, they are doing, they are configuring what's called advising trees, and this is pretty much our each program layout, they're putting into the new system so that our students can be evaluated against that. They're doing that remotely this week and next week. They're also working on mapping our new convert, our new data over to the old system, so they're literally have spreadsheets filled with where it's coming from and where it's going to go in the new system, and they're working on that. They'll be presenting that to us about middle of January on their recommendations, and then we'll try for your first pass again, January 11th. That's, that's it in a nutshell, but I imagine you have a lot of questions about it?
Doesn't sound like a very little nutshell. We talked a little with Dr. Fordy at the work session about particularly his financial side, and this sounds to me like it's something that we should have been doing already.
Absolutely, yes.
Most businesses put that AS400 on the shelf about 15 years ago.
Right. And in my research and my discussions with other colleges that have done this conversion, I haven't found anyone that's done it more recently than 10 years, you know? We put it along with a Green Bar paper.
I thought when Mike said we're going to put it on shelf, I thought you were going to say send it to the Smithsonian. Started a little museum here. Yes, well, not about that, but you know, I know different, same subject but different flavor here, you know, cybersecurity. So where are we at with that, I know, when we really, when we start updating our technology, and, which is, as you heard, we're way, way behind the time. That's something that every institution has to look at is their cybersecurity. So can you tell us where we are with that?
Absolutely. As it pertains to this project, this is actually going to improve our cybersecurity, because right now, frankly, the AS400 is not as secure as it should be, and that was by design and by configuration choice. So this is actually going to tie in a lot better with our. So this is actually going to tie in a lot better with our current system and current security system and the security groups and levels. So we're thrilled to be going to that, because frankly, in IT, it's nerve-wracking to know how vulnerable the AS400 actually is. On a more departmental note, we've recognized certain areas of security have been lax, and those will be addressed with the new system as far as password policies go. We've also implemented training and informational initiatives. What I mean by that is, we found that knowledge is power, not to sound too cliche, but informing our end-user groups of what a phishing email looks like, or things to look out for during this type of thing, what they can do if they are unfortunately a victim of phishing and stuff. We've found that keeping our end-users up to date on all of those tactics out there has greatly improved our security in terms of our most vulnerable points, which are end-users. We get phishing attacks and scam emails almost on a daily basis. And outside of the technology or firewall and our human gateway, we still get a ton that come through. And if somebody clicks on that, well, there's nothing really in the technology that we can do once the damage is done. So we found that being proactive about it, teaching them what to look for and why it's bad, has helped a lot. And our end-users have really picked up, and they all inform IT as soon as they see something. We get it blocked usually, and, well, not usually, always. Then we have some other initiatives in the future that we can address too. But our main goal is to get off the AS400 so that we can utilize the native security features of our active directory, such as password policies. Hope that helps.
That does. But you know, that's what I would think with the newer system. We were up to date to the threats that are out there versus something from the Stone Age.
Right.
So then, you know, are you limiting access? Okay. Mike, talk about that.
Access is controlled by groups. So if you are a member of registration, you're put in a certain group with a certain amount of control and certain access to areas. And we will begin with each module manager or each department head to define what those rules are.
Are you running any kind of mock drills?
Not yet. That's definitely in the future. There's a lot of programs out there that will do mock drills. They will send users delivered fake emails to see which ones are clicking on it, and then we can address those individually. Definitely in the future. Those are a little pricey, so I'm not sure we have the budget for it. After this project, though, I'm sure we can find room for it.
You know, it's always something to think about, because that's something that everybody has to look at, is more and more cybersecurity in their budgets.
Yes, and I know that a lot of community colleges in this area have implemented such a program. And so I'm thinking that we might be able to get some sort of consortium pricing on it.
That would be able to go through education.
That's one thing that I've discussed with education, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike?
I do have a question. When it becomes a community situation where we need to share data, for instance, county, city, USD, where does this begin?
As far as security goes?
Yeah.
Well, we always have to make sure that, you know, we're following FERPA guidelines. And so that is kind of our main point of, main point to start with, right? We can't give too much information out. It's been my experience, though, that when we do need to share data to the county, to the state, whatever, it's in a controlled manner, and it usually doesn't contain any of what's called PII data, personal identifiable information. So that would be social security numbers, data verse, and whatnot. So they, the ones that are requesting it, they know what they can request versus what we will just flat-out refuse. I think ultimately, the security of our students' data is top priority, so I want to make sure we're not giving it out.
Sounds good.
Okay. Mike, you referenced that the data that you're moving forward is from July of 16.
You need, that for the business office, yes.
Right. Is there any relevance to that? Why July of 16?
We talked about, actually, I'm glad I mentioned that, because I wanted to make one more point. We talked with the module managers. We talked to the business office, and initially, we thought just five years of data. Now, they brought up a good point in the discussion, saying, well, do you really need to know if student X paid a $25 parking fee back in 1996? As long as it's paid and there's no balance, do you really need that information? And so we took a look at our, what's called our transaction history, which contains all the records for this general ledger, and there was over 7 million rows of data in that, just that table alone. So talking to Genzabar experts, they said, well, that's a lot of data, a lot of room for mistakes. And again, do you really need all that data? Do you need to know the detail level of that? And so we talked about it, and we decided that July 1st of 2016 would be enough data for them to move forward and still have some historical in case, you know, students needed to know, parents needed to know, whatever. Now, one thing I forgot to mention was that for our flight students, we're handling things a little bit differently. We are just basically taking everything for the flight students and putting it into the new system. So we're able to single out that group, bring over everything in there, so that they can then perform any audits that the VA or anyone else needs to do out of the new system, rather than trying to go back to the old one.
So you'll go back to 2008?
With them, we're singling them out by program.
Okay.
So, yeah, 2008, but we're not doing it by date range. We're doing it per student by singling out them by the program they're in.
I'm glad you pointed that out, because that was a concern.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right. So as we go through those different uploads, those different packets at time, any indication of how it's going to go? Or are you just going to wait till you do the first packet? See, have you got a feel for things?
They've given us some feedback on things they've already seen, and based upon their feedback, we're in pretty good shape. One of the key areas that they said is usually a headache for them is in the amount of duplicate students. And actually, thanks to the due diligence of our records office, we have very few, less than four, where they said they're usually dealing with more than 4,000. So they were very, very thrilled to find that out. And like I said, that was the diligence of our records and admissions people. That's about it, the only feedback they've given us thus far. They've given us a few little things to clean up, because that is the ideal situation. If they can clean it up, if we can clean it up in the new system before we convert it over, then I know that's clean data going into clean data. But nothing major has come up so far. Now, after our first pass in February, we do expect to see more issues arise. But I don't foresee anything overwhelmingly in the future.
Okay. So come October, if everything goes as planned, we'll have full implementation. From that day forward, what do you expect and hope to see?
So one of the things that came out of this entire discussion and project was the need to create a centralized governance for our data. So the configuration that we're doing is going to touch many, many different areas. Configuration admissions might touch an area over here in registration. An area in here where registration might touch an area in development, or what they call the foundation. And the need for us to really group together and talk about and discuss those changes before it's actually made and affects, negatively affects another department is critical, and something that we don't have here. So in the future, I plan on putting together this governance with the individuals, the module managers, or department heads in each of those affected areas, so that we can discuss upcoming changes, we can discuss proposed changes, and how those areas might be affected if we change it in here.
You know, data is great, as long as you do something with it. So I hope with these tools, we develop that data-driven, you know, model.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes. We've, part of this project, we've developed some success statements. And those really echo that sentiment. We want to create an environment that people can get the right data during, you know, at the right time. And that's a big gap right here that we have now. And this will facilitate state reporting a lot, a lot easier. The regulatory reporting we have to do, iPads, et cetera, is all controlled by the vendor. So any changes that come down, for 1098Ts, for iPads, anything like that, is tested and configured by the vendor and then pushed as an update to us, so we always have the latest and greatest. And they always have people there looking out for those things. So the reporting side of this is going to be huge, huge improvement for the college.
I somewhat misspoke there. I said data-driven environment. What I really wanted to say was data-driven culture. To me, everything is about the culture. And in any business, any structure, culture trumps strategy. Because if you don't have the culture, the strategy isn't going to work. But that's why it's going to be paramount to the mission that you develop, that data-driven culture.
Jane, I promise I didn't have any conversation with you about this, but we're bringing in a gentleman. We're having a meeting with a gentleman on the phone next week about data-driven decisions. And he's going to be speaking to our faculty and staff. And what I'd also like to do is maybe have a situation, Martin O'Lance, which is well-known, League of Innovation, and allow him to meet with the board and talk to him about data-driven decisions. Maybe have a dinner with him. He's got a lot of information, very, very smart guy. I'm glad that we're going to be able to bring him on campus. But part of it is, is that's what community colleges are doing now, data-driven decisions, and that's how they're changing their culture. And if you're not doing that right now, then you're in trouble. And that's why it's so important for us to be doing what we're doing and making sure that we make decisions the right way.
Can I just add that Title V is funding the election of Dr. Martin O'Lance, right? So I think Ryan and Title V.
Could you say that, say that again, Jane, because I don't want to hurt you?
Title V will be funding the guest and his time here, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, there are funds available in Title V for guest speakers, things of that nature. So, yes, thank you.
He's been spending, he's done his whole career, in fact, he used to be, he used to be president of the whole Western Governors, was over the League of Innovation, and well-known, and is, well-known, has data, and has been doing this for 20 years. So he'll be a good speaker and also somebody that we can talk to and rely on.
Part of the report training and Training Trip 4 includes 12 licenses for Genzabar's product called InfoMaker. And that is a graphical interface that allows our end-users to be able to pull information, pull data out of the system. We're going to be training, because we got up to 12 licenses, and we're going to train department heads, and as long as licensed, we have people from each of those departments on how they can pull data out of the system and interpret and use it. That's one of our biggest gaps right now, is that there's very limited reporting. Usually, anything new and having to come out of the old system goes through me. So I'm kind of a single point of failure in that. It's unfortunate, but it's true. You know, if I'm out, then people can't get their data, and we can't function like that, so.
You know, the one thing that we can rest assured of is that, especially today, going forward, the rapid change, rapid pace of change is going to come our way. So we have the Genzabar. Who is out there? What are we, who's really on task looking out there to see if this is holding the mark? Where we need to be going? If this is a technology that stays or goes, you know? You know, things change, and it's going to be rapid, and we've got to keep pace with it to a degree. You can't just totally chase it, but we fell behind. And we can't let that happen again. And the thing is, is you look at those 20 years or what have you, you're going to have that kind of change in the next five. So we need to make sure that we're keeping at least aware of that.
We have the old system of the state, maybe the country.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, we need to be aware of that, the pace that that change is going to be coming at us.
Absolutely. And I take that upon myself. I think that's, you know, that's my role in this organization, is to make sure that we're always looking ahead.
But you're correct. Our job as this group, and I'm real proud of this group, is using the information and being able to give it to you guys and letting you all know what we're doing with it. Because that's important for us, that when you make those decisions, this is why we're doing this, and that's exactly the importance of it.
I think this discussion about how it's going to be used is just as important as how it's going to work. So I'm really pleased.
You hate to say, well, I guess it's that way, or maybe that way. You want to be able to say, this is why it is, why we're doing this, the reason for it.
Anything else? Mike, you, Mike, thank you. Okay. Next up, Scott is going to give an update on HLC.
I was hoping you'd be able to ask Mike a question that you wouldn't be able to answer.
Didn't work. Didn't work. I'll get you next time.
Mr. Chairman, Reivers, Board, Dr. Nopei. Glad to come up here and answer your questions you may have. I'm going to say some things. At any point you want to stop me, please go ahead. I want you to understand that accreditation is not very transparent. I think by design, often, honestly, like I said, one of the apocryphal jokes or stories that the HLC team members will say, and HLC people will say, and presidents will say is, whenever a visit starts out, the team chair will sit down with the institution president, and they will have a meeting. And there's two things said at the beginning, two little white lies. The president said, we'll say, we're glad you're here. And the team chair will say, well, we're here to help. Okay? That kind of sets the tone for the whole thing. There's a lot of tension in this relationship, so you have to understand that. Now, I want you to understand that a team really can get, be in their bonnet, and they can make a decision, and it's very hard to abuse them of a notion that they set during the visit. There was an ALO at an institution, and everything went well. The visit seemed fine. The team went away. And two weeks later, they get the initial report back. And in the report, it says, "Based on data provided by the dean of students, it is clear that the college has a retention problem with student athletes. Thereby, the team has determined that the institution must put in a monitoring report about their plan to address retention of student athletes." And the ALO went, what data? What data was provided by the dean of students? Went down to see the dean of students, and the dean of students says, huh? And he had to rack his brain about what did we talk about in the home meeting between the team chair and the dean of students? And after a little while, he goes, oh, I remember telling him we had a record number of athletes leaving this year, especially football players, more than last year, by about 50% more than last year. So we dug into everything at the school. The ALO dug into, all right, I'll tell you, I was the ALO. We dug into everything, and we looked at all the data and everything else, and we determined the reason why we had a record number of freshmen, football athletes, leaving is because the prior year, the coach had left, took almost every last year's school, took almost all the returning freshmen with him. So the new coach had to bring in almost a full team. We had literally recruited more than twice as many new football students as we would have normally. So being 150% up in people leaving was actually a success. So we wrote a five-page white paper and submitted it to the team chair, saying, look, really, we're in good shape. Here's why we're in good shape. These students are actually more likely to stay than the average student, et cetera, et cetera. They thanked us for that report, and they changed their report to say, "Based on data that shows that student athletes are more likely to stay than the average student," et cetera, et cetera. on data that shows that student athletes are more likely to stay, it is the judgment of the team that you have a problem with the retention of student athletes and need to submit a monitoring report." And, you know, you, all you could do is say, "Well, I guess we could go to the, uh, we go to the HLC and we could try to have a hearing and we, and it's like, or we could just write a report that says what we're doing, how successful it is." Which is, of course, what we did. So they really are the judge and the jury and the executioner. And it's very interesting to be on these visits because I've done it. And there's sort of three outcomes. There's outcomes where you say, "Look, they really are in good shape in most things, maybe a couple of concerns that we can mention," and maybe four outcomes. Then we can pass on to them and say, "Please fix this." Most schools get that. Many schools get that and that's what's called a renewal. That's a standard renewal. Or there could be more serious concerns that we think you need to really write a monitoring report on and submit and have some team look at. And that's still a normal renewal, but it's with monitoring and we're right with monitoring in the letter. Then if it's list below that where they say, "You know, there's all these criteria, there's all these core components, but in this one, you're in danger of not meeting our criteria." You are immediately in their mind unnoticed. It only takes one. And the interesting thing is, is once they determine that there's one they're not going to let go of, and I can name ours very easily, it was our finances. Once they determine one, the team chair will quit arguing with the members who say, "But I want mine on the list too." Because it doesn't matter if there's one or if there's 20, you're still unnoticed. And in fact, they almost think it's a good idea to give you all the list and let you work on them. Because that way you can be advised where you're having trouble and you can make progress and you can reach out, get your resources and you can fix things. So it's sort of, once you get one in place, and we had one, we got three more. I think if there'd have been six more that could have added, they would have added six more. That's typically how this goes. It can get worse. If they determine you're out of compliance with one, you're on probation. That happened to our sister institution down the road and I think they literally opened up the can of worms and anything they found that they had any concern about, they just put in their list and said, "Go work on all these." So that's kind of how the system works when you're in the room making the decision. I don't know, they think they're doing you a favor, maybe they are. Because the worst thing in the world is for you to have a perennial problem that keeps getting worse and then you're trying to justify you've been ignoring it for all these years. In many ways, where we got in trouble, the way they looked at the board, and if you know what they say, fiduciary, legal fiduciary responsibilities, what they were really upset was the board of this institution had allowed the CFI to go from the four, five range down below one, which they don't like, for two years. And there was nothing in the minutes to say the board was upset by that. Then it went back up for one year and that was good. We, actually, we're on monitoring during the time. I don't know if you know this, I don't know if it was reported at the time, but we were asked to do a monitoring report on that. And we got out of, out of hock, if you will, we got above one for a year. Then the next year, we went below one. And so they sent us a letter saying, and this was when I came in, they sent us a letter in November of 17 and said, "By the way, you're below one again. You've been below one before. What's your plan?" So Veda and I, Vid Harmon and I got together and put together a letter saying, "Yes, we acknowledge we're below one. We really think we'll be above one next year. Here's why we believe this based on the preliminary audit, et cetera, et cetera." And they accepted the letter and we went away. But when the team came, they looked back and say, "You were below standard, you were below standard, you were above standard, you were below standard, now you're above standard again. That's three out of five years you've been below standard." And we don't see the board with a hair on fire about this. And you might disagree with them because they're not on the board, but their thinking is if I were on the board, my hair would be on fire. Because that's, they think that's very serious and it is serious. You know, we have a lot of debt, we know it. We know why we have the low CFI. So with that in mind, there was no doubt they were going to put us unnoticed because we're in danger of being below one. We've been below one several times. And that's where you're in the zone and not really meeting the standards. In fact, some people on the team, I think, wanted us to have probation just for that. The reason why we didn't get it is, uh, we, we did a good job. We admitted we had an issue, we were working the issues. Uh, we were very transparent. We were very upbeat about what we were trying to do. And so I think that swayed at least the team chair and some of the team, but I don't know, I'm speculating, I'll admit it, to say, "No, I think notice is enough." Now, there were a lot of things listed into notice. When we went to Chicago, we took a team, we took the board chair, took the president, we took Dr. Huerta and I went myself and it was great. It was not fun, but it was great. Uh, it took probably about 15, 20 minutes just to get really comfortable, but it was very engaging. We talked a lot about it. We were very serious about it. We were very aware of all the issues, everybody could talk about just about any issue and what we were doing about it. And it was definitely a team effort of talking about what we were changing already, what we planned to change. And as a result, when we walked out of there, I think we really got a stamp of endorsement, they won't call it this, but they said, "Well, okay, we're going to come visit you on a focus visit in 2020, but we don't want any interim reports." The team had recommended some interim reports on several issues, but they, but the IAC did not order those. And that basically is indication, "We believe your strategy is as good as you can do, just go do it. It won't do any good to tell us the interim. Tell us the good story when you're in compliance, 100%. Not at risk of being out of compliance." So it was not fun. It was a great experience to have had. It's not one I would want to repeat, but we will get to repeat it because in 2020, they're going to come give us a focus visit. And even if we get a clean bill of health, which I think we really will, and I can tell you why, even when we get that, it's going to have, we're going to have to go back to the IAC and sit there again and convince them that the team is right. That the team judgment really is correct. So then the IAC will recommend to the, the board of the HLC that we should be renewed without notice. And, you know, "Well, the notice should be removed," is what they will call it. Because we're, we're still accredited. We're still accredited through, we will have another visit in, uh, 2022, I think, is our next one. And that's normal. They give you a 10-year accreditation on standard pathways, but they visit you after four. So that will be our fourth year. So I think we're in good shape. Let me tell you why we're, I think we're in good shape. I really think our CFI is going to stay above one. I think we've taken steps to make sure this is going to happen. And if we can post three straight years above one, there won't be any, we won't really be in danger of falling below that. The very fact that we're above one, that will show the board is taking fiduciary responsibility seriously in the HLC's view. And the comments about the split board, I think you all are doing a lot better at working around and actually putting the college first. Want community on that? This board's come a long ways. And I think there was a lot of emotion in this in the first place and I think that's to be expected after an election cycle. It's all of those always run, but I think, I don't know, proud of y'all. I really think you're going to do it.
Thank you, Scott.
Any questions?
I do, Scott. So, so the HLC, you know, recommended some reports and then said, "No."
Yeah.
Yeah. Should we continue on with those reports internally so we maintain, we're, make sure we're monitoring the progress to the areas that they, they criticize us on? How do we, how do we monitor that? Because making sure that when they come in 2020, you complimented us, but let, let us compliment you and the team on the great work that you guys did in getting prepared for the exam, the audit, however you want to characterize it. I'm going to revert to it as an audit because that's one I'm best used to. Okay. So you guys did a great job and I think coming out of the meeting in Chicago, that's the reason why we were put on audit. They had those three findings. But they also saw the great work that we were already doing in addressing each and every one of those items. So what I would think as a board, we would, I would like to see, to make sure that we're hitting every category that they criticize us on and monitor that progress.
Okay, we can do that.
I mean, that's my way, my way of thinking of doing it. That's just from getting a, you know, an audit from, a bank audit. And that's what we do there, so maybe you've got a different process, but checks and balances here. I want to make sure that we're, we're keeping up with that.
Right, right.
So maybe, maybe you can advise me on a, on a different structure that worked best, but I, I, I think...
No, I don't think that would be a reason. We could certainly report on the progress on those things.
Okay.
We just have to set a timeline when you want to see some reports.
Correct, correct. Agree.
I think that'd be reasonable.
Because, you know, they, they recommended those reports, so they said, "No, we don't want you to do that." But I think it'd be a good idea, let's just go ahead and take their advice. And that, one, demonstrate our willingness to listen to their advice and move their direction. Okay? That, to me, is what you should do with your auditor.
Well, it would be good because when they come to visit, you'd have that document to put forward. And say, "The board was engaged in this, the board was holding people accountable to this. And here's the, you can see the progress across this." They may not even read them and that's fine that they wouldn't, but, you know, well, some of them might though. But, you know...
Don't read them.
But, uh, you know, it'll depend on the person, but the fact that they exist will help a lot.
I think it would. I really do think it would. I mean, that shows the professionalism and sincerity, you're taking the right approach on this, 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 this task. Anything else for Scott?
One other question. We've just been talking about all our records and data.
Right.
And particularly financial. Is that going to help us in that setting?
Yes, yes. I mean, there's things we can do that, there's a lot, there's a lot of things we can do for the outcomes. When we're doing it sort of without the system, but there's a lot of evidence that will be in there that we can pull to show good outcomes for our students. It'll upstream it that, we're also getting much more tied into the National Union Clearhouse and its LDS that will allow us to have a better chance of tracking where some of our graduates go. That would be a good thing to have. Right now, we have some stuff that comes back from Kansas, but, you know, all these would be additional evidence to go along with what we're doing internally to show that our outcomes are good. So it'll help.
Good. Thank you. We appreciate you. We want you to know that.
All right. Anything else for Scott? All right. Thank you, Scott. You know, I don't want to belabor this, but I, I truly wish each and every one of your trustees were there in Chicago with us because you would have witnessed, you know, a great, great show of professionalism from the three of our executive team and how they worked with the HLC review group. They truly, truly did a great job representing the school, so I'm extremely, extremely proud of them, the four of them. You guys carried all the work. So thank you all very much for that. Okay. Next up, we'll have a HR update from Christie, so you are on the agenda. The red line.
There we go, my bad. I don't have much of an update. I actually just wanted to share some thank-yous from our staff and faculty. They have been extremely gracious of the holiday bonuses that you as a board approved. So I just have some email thank-yous and some thank-you notes. And we went around last Thursday, myself and one of my payroll clerks, and we hand-delivered almost all the checks and were received with open arms. Everybody's really appreciative and I think some of the board members can attest to that. Some people shared some wonderful, kind words with them, so these are just for you if you guys want to pass them around.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much and, you know, I just think as a board, it was just, we felt very, very good about being able to do that for our faculty and staff. I think we all appreciate and respect the job that they do and I think the note that the president sent out was very telling of our sincere feelings and so I'm glad that we were able to do that.
I'm going to take this opportunity to say that it's not just this staff and this community of the college, but it's our entire city that needs to look towards each other. One of the, one of the stories that I heard the other night was a person in an area had a colleague that was trying to determine how much money to put aside for gas to get back and forth to work and groceries and Christmas. And nothing was coming out to make it work. And tears had been shed and comments had been made and then in walks all of you guys and hands them this check. And they said that then the tears turned to joy because this one employee was able to match what she wanted by the gas, the food, and one more little thing for her family. And we don't think about that at this time of year. You know, we, we talk about what we want, but so often it's this time of year that causes the most turmoil in families. And I applaud this college for looking at our family and taking care of each other.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And I want to thank the board for, for doing what you did because not only did we give to full-time, you know, we gave a bonus to the full-time, but we also gave to part-time. It's amazing how many of those people work out here part-time and work very, very hard. You see, swicking the streets and all these kind of things out there. And, uh, they were very, very appreciative and I, it's amazing, you know, we give raises and I understand that, but this bonus seems to be, I've, I've had more people, I mean, I'll give you an example, we had 160 at the Christmas party. We've never had 160 since I've been here. So people, and people were talking about it, very appreciative. So thank you all.
And we heard it that night, personally.
Okay. All right, now we'll move on to board action items. So Ida May, second review of board policy 205.
Okay, this is the second and final reading for the board committee's policy 205. Since we first had the reading last board meeting, I haven't received any suggestions on further revision. So we would present it, if you have no questions, we would present it for final approval.
Okay.
Have you had any other comments?
I, I did not receive comments from any other board members or nor from any staff or anything like that.
Anybody else.
Yes.
Is any further comments or discussion on this policy?
Well, I think it's, it's, the way it was written before, I think is good enough. I think it's unnecessary, but I don't object to it really, but I think it's an unnecessary change. It seemed like the old policy covered it pretty well. But you could have a committee and, and committee would work until its work was done and then committee would then dissolve.
Well, the comment about that is that HLC commented that we were not following our policy, so I think this is something that will be more, more just, you know, clearer. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it specifies between a standing committee and a special committee on the old verbiage and also since we had appointed some standing committees, it brings us into alignment with that.
Okay, I will take a motion to approve the policy.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Next up, Ivan B with Grad Images Agreement.
Okay, we're bringing this agreement to you and asking for your approval for the second year in a row. Last year was the first year that we had an agreement with Grad Images to provide photography services for our commencement program. Our marketing staff were very pleased with their services last year. Our students were happy and parents were. And we have the agreement, did pass the approval on the wording and the verbiage of Glenn Curbs. And so we're asking again for your approval of this agreement so that we can work with them again. and so we're asking again for your approval of this agreement so that we can work with them again for commencement. And I think Andrea is here, and they were very happy working with them.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm in approval.
Okay. And Jeremy seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Beth. Now we'll move on to Dr. Forgie and some certification adjustments, sir.
Yes, first let me introduce our new comptroller, Jessica West.
Hi, Jessica, thank you for joining us.
I think she's been here, what, this is your third week? And she's been baptized by fire. Her first week, I think she was in Ginsbar training all week and helping us to start modifying our accounting structures.
Okay, great.
But the items C, D, and E are necessary documents and resolutions, certifications to our banking institutions to add her to our signatory list.
I'll take a motion to approve all three at the same time.
I move.
So, is that for all three?
Yes.
Okay. Second, is there a second? There is a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And, and you'll see that removed from this agenda is the grant of easement. If anybody has any questions on that, they no longer needed it, they went a different route, so that's why that's been stricken from the agenda. So, so we'll move on to item G. Is there any questions on that? Okay. So we'll move on to item G, the Gateway Service, Service Application.
This is, we were talking about cybersecurity a little earlier, and back in 2006, a new set of industry standards pertaining to payment card, payment cards, credit cards and things like that, when you used them in businesses, was established, and it's called P C I compliance, Payment Card Industry Compliance. And in order to participate and have credit card machines in your institution, you have to have this compliance. The bookstore uses, currently was using CashNet, which was supported by the Missouri Book Services, which is the service that we use. Well, they're no longer going to support CashNet, so we're having to change and go with Vanta, which again complies with the P C I standards that are necessary for, for the bookstore to continue operation.
All right, and then we have a review from our attorney, Mr. Curbs.
And we're, we're not quite finished with the process. We've reviewed the agreement that was given to us, we made some requests for some changes. We got back some changes, and I think we realized that they were talking about one set of terms and conditions that they have for the contract, and we were looking at a different set of terms and conditions for the contract. I think everything's going to be resolved, but that just hasn't been finalized yet. And so I think that's why the recommendation is to make a contingent upon attorney approval because we're waiting for the matching terms and conditions to come back, and we haven't received those yet. But they have given us indication, they'll make the changes we're requesting, they just don't, they just don't match with the documents that we've reviewed, so.
Okay.
I think that'll be resolved.
Well, I was concerned with your number of, of questions, and I wondered if there is any other choice. Is this the way to go?
Yeah, and, and they, they sent back an amendment addressing each of those changes. They just don't refer to the same paragraphs and numbers and the terms and conditions that we looked at. So they have multiple, apparently multiple, terms and conditions, and so they're working, I think, on making the amendment that with what we actually reviewed, so.
We really need to make the change, there's no question about it.
I think that it has to happen by December 31st.
Would you be more comfortable if we delayed it another month, or do you think it would be okay?
It has to happen by December 31st, if at all possible.
Okay.
So the motion would be to grant approval pending?
Pending approval.
Final, legal approval.
I need to approve depending, with dependence on Glenn's approval.
All right, the motion, is there a second?
Second, oh, go ahead, take Kathy.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, now we'll move on to the statement of work from, for Ginsbar. So, either Mike or Dr. Forgie, who wants to take it?
Well, let me give you kind of an analogy. Dr. Nolte bought a new Nolly. It is a very nice vehicle, it has power windows, heated seat, there's a very nice navigation system.
And deer marks.
Yes, and now deer marks. But it would be like if, if Dr. Nolte bought that vehicle and then didn't buy the starter to operate the vehicle. And what we did is we bought the system, and I think that the budget component is kind of the starter to the whole thing. So this is to add the budget module and the fixed asset module, which I think is very important to cause it, it streamlines any time you buy a fixed asset, it automatically puts it in your system, rather than having a separate software system that then you have to go in manually and add that into that system. This is just incorporating and purchasing these two modules, and this will be purchased out of the technology fund, so.
Okay, so in our work session yesterday, you made some reference to that, about how some of our purchases in the past have done through general, and that they should probably more, better apply to the technology. Would you like to discuss that?
Well, when I went back and looked at the board action, and you raised the technology fee, I believe, $2, I think this past year, maybe in, in February or March. And the specific purpose, purpose that you designated that $2 for was for technology, and specifically for the Ginsbar project. When I looked at the budget this year, instead of that money being taken out of the technology fund, it was budgeted in the general fund. And so we would make, move that, taking it out of the general fund budget, and put it appropriately where it should be funded out of, and that's the technology fund. And I think that there are some other items, technology related, that we can, that we can fund out of the technology fund.
It seems to me that as much as we spend on Ginsbar to get started, we should have put a starter on it. You know? This is an ongoing expense.
Looks like so.
I don't know, I don't know why they didn't, why don't they sell it with the star drawn?
They, I think that Ginsbar and companies that sell E R P systems like this have all these different modules that you can buy. There's a module for the development for the foundation, we haven't bought that one. But they have a lot of different modules, if some aren't necessary. But certain modules certainly are beneficial and are very much needed. I think the budget module is certainly needed.
And I can, sorry, I can address that directly. When, in our initial conversation with Ginsbar to draft the clause, we had just told him, give us everything that we have now. No bells and whistles, just what would it take to get us running with everything we have now on the new system? We never used the fixed assets or the budget modules in the old system, therefore they weren't included in the initial clause.
And another point in the work session, we talked about Mike having a revised agreement, is that pertinent?
The initial proposal that Ginsbar sent us on this particular module included conversion costs. And so Mike told them, say, look, there's no conversion costs going to be involved. And so they sent a revised agreement that took those costs out of the, out of the.
We've already gained by that?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Good job.
All right, so, and then, attorney Curbs, you had a chance to review?
I did.
Yes? You left a comment?
Left five to me.
All right, so I would look for a motion to approve.
I would move to approve the order for software and services from Ginsbar.
Okay. Second? Any further discussion?
I think we have to do it, there's no point, but not often you want to do it.
Yes, I agree. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll move on to item I, football head coach. That was in a separate handout, should be at your desk. So, Jacob, you have the floor, sir.
Obviously, when Coach Thomas resigned from his position, we started a national search and spent quite a bit of time looking at multiple candidates. We had over, we had over 70 applicants for our position. I was told by somebody in this room that he'd never be on a search committee again for athletics because he didn't want to go through that many. But it came down to, we felt like we had six very quality applicants, and we did Skype interviews with six and then brought three of those six to campus after doing that. And in the end, we made an offer and contingent upon your approval tonight, we would like to hire Mr. Ricky Coon as our new head football coach, starting Friday, actually, start date would be on Friday.
Tell us a little bit.
Coach Coon is currently the associate head coach and defensive line coach at Southeast Missouri State. He, interestingly enough, knew the Harshberger name when, when he came. He said, I think, I think I know somebody who's related to him. As, as Chairman Harshberger's daughter obviously is playing at C M O. He has a great background, he actually played at Dodge City in 1999, he's from Wichita, from Wichita South, graduated from Bethel College in Newton, is married to a Newton native. He has since been the defensive coordinator at Highland Community College, Ellsworth Community College in Iowa, Northwest Mississippi Junior College, and then obviously has moved on to Southeast Missouri. There's been a couple of other stops in there, D two at Southwest Baptist University, as well as Northern State. But very, very good coaching background, he's coached at all different levels, and so I, I think we felt like he was a good fit. Like I said, it was not an easy decision, we had multiple very, very, very good candidates, it was not an easy decision. But very excited about having Coach Coon on board.
Tell him the philosophy of Kansas kids.
He was, one of the things is, he's a big believer that at some point, there will go back to be a limitation in, in the Kansas, having Kansas kids on the roster. And he said, his comment was, I don't want to be behind the eight ball at that point, I don't want our roster to be upside down. So the second I walk in, my intention is to recruit as close to the old rules as we possibly can and be, still be successful. So his intention is to have a number of Kansas kids on our roster. And he, he was very adamant about that in the interview process. And I think that will start immediately. His, his best friend from college is actually the head coach at Wichita Northwest High School, and he made a stop there actually on his way back after the interview, before he got on the plane to go back to Cape Girardeau. So he made a stop there to talk to him, and I, I think, I think that stop was to discuss what there possibly might be. So his intention is definitely to have more, more Kansas kids on our roster because he's a big believer in what the community college system has provided him, for sure. Obviously Dodge City provided him a great opportunity, so he's a big believer in what it's provided him and also what it's provided a number of the guys that he played with here at Dodge City. Other questions?
Thank you for that, I was going to ask you about his recruiting philosophy.
No, I just, I, I'm glad to hear that. Okay, Kansas kid myself and graduate here, I'm very happy to hear that.
It was a large discussion, even, even after the interview, there was a discussion within the committee, and one of the committee members made the comment, there may be better talent on the field right now, but we had better teams when we had Kansas kids, and.
That's the point.
You know, and you look at, you look at the record, we won this conference, won more national championships with our limitations than without, so.
That's right.
That's right.
Comes down to something I spoke a little earlier, and that is for this room and your team and the team on the field, culture, teamwork, synergy. Very, very important.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of head football coach Coon? So moved. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Saying that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Move on, do I have an approval of the consent agenda as presented?
I would move to approve the consent agenda, excuse me, agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. We will now move on into executive session number one, and we have four on the agenda. So I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss agreements. Pardon? Oh, my bad. Let's do, take a, let's take a 10-minute break. Let's try to be here going at 20 till. Teamy Christmas.
But we understood.
Let me get this right. I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss agreements filed by a member of the Dodge City Community College Faculty Association pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act, K S A 75-43-19B1. The open meeting to resume in this location, at how much time?
That's at least 40 minutes, probably, because they're going to make their presentations.
Okay, how about if I just put it as a quarter after? So we'll resume a session at 8:15. So, do I have a motion?
Then also, who's going to be in there?
Oh, yes. To the addition of the trustees, the county attorney, the college attorney, excuse me again. Vice, the president, Vice President LaWarta, Charlie Figger, Vice President Forgie, Justin Wile, and Justin Smith should be included in the executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now in executive session. Okay, we are now, now back in regular session, but we will have to recess back into executive session. So Glenn, I'll let you read.
Okay. You want to do 30 minutes?
30 minutes.
All right, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss agreements filed by a member of the Dodge City Community College Faculty Association pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, K S A 75-43-19B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 8:45 P M. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney, the president, vice president LaWarta, Charlie Figger, vice president Forgie, Justin Wile, and Justin Smith should be included in the executive session.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, same sign. All right, we will regain session at 10 till 9. We are now in executive session. Okay, we are back in regular session. We will need to go back into executive, executive session for another 15 minutes. Let's say till 12:03, uh, 9:03? 12:03. We got to read the motion.
I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss agreements filed by a member of the Dodge City Community College Faculty Association pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, K S A 75-49, 43-19B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 9:03 P M. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney should be included in the executive session.
Motion?
So moved.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are now in executive session. So 9:03. Thank you, we are now back in session, and we are requesting to go back into another executive session, executive session number two. Oh, no action was taken in the previous, from the previous executive session. So, attorney Curbs?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss negotiations with the Professional Relations Committee of the Dodge City Community College Faculty Association. And, excuse me, for the 2018, 2019-
Association, and, excuse me, for the 2018-2019 school year contract pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 75-4319B3. The open meeting to resume in this location at 9:15 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, college attorney, Vice President LaWorda, Vice President Forgie, and Carl Patish should be included in the executive session.
Your first motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now in, now in executive session. Okay, we are, we are now back in session and we, no action was taken. We will go now back into executive session number three, so Attorney Curbs?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss an employment contract pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 9:32 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president and college attorney should be included in the executive session.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are now in executive session. All right, we are now back in session and there is a motion to be presented to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve the Fifth Addendum to Employment Contract for Dr. Harold Nolte. The addendum extends Dr. Nolte's employment contract from June 30, 2020 to June 30, 2021 with all other terms and provisions of the part, of the employment contract prior addendum remaining the same.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, we'll now go back to executive session number four.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss employee hire pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 9:40 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, college attorney, Kristi Olschweiger should be included in the executive session.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Kathy? Maya seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now in executive session number four. Okay, we are now back in session and there is action to be made?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve the hiring of Mary Anita Aragon by Dodge City Community College after considering Board's Policy 806, which deals with nepotism.
This would make an exception to policy?
This would make an exception to policy and she would be employed as a count to pay for the work.
Okay, that is a motion? Do I have a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'm, I'm going to be honest, I don't know how I feel about it. I, I know that the pool is shallow out there and I know that she's qualified. But I also know that we worked hard for a policy change in this area. So, I, I don't know how I feel about it.
Kathy, I echo your sentiments and totally agree, you have a good candidate, you can see both sides, I think we have a nepotism policy in place for reason towards issues and that's problematic.
Mr. Chairman, I feel like there have to be exceptions sometimes and that this committee has worked and made a decision because of the candidate's qualification. And I would like to think that we can put a person into a, into an office in the campus that is the best qualified person to help the college. So, I feel that this time, because we have considered the policy and the problems that we've had in nepotism, that we need to make an exception in this case. I will be voting for the candidate.
And I believe that we have a business to run and we need to run it effectively and professionally and we have a great candidate. I think I have full faith that the administrators and the staff will be careful that this particular relationship will not be harmful to the college.
For me to support this action, then I'm going to make a demand on administration and I want to see reports on the activities. I want a proper oversight. I want to see reports. If I can get that assurance, then I'll, I'll support. If I can't get that assurance, I will not support.
I think, you know, specifically, Chris, it would be the, that any, any inputs of caught, any, any accounts receivable that are, anything that's brought in for any one of relation would then be handled by other staff members, as you clearly stated was, was the intent and plan, so that there is that proper oversight and that all of the other appropriate policies involving the checks and balances that are there for multiple oversights is, will be implemented and be put into place.
Right.
And just to be presenting that documentation, I think is what, what Chair Harshberger is asking, if I'm not putting words in your mouth.
No, that's very good. Dr. Presley and like Christine Malone said, trust. I'm a trust and verify person. Okay, so I want to verify.
We'll try, we'll try very hard not to put the board in this situation.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, with that, meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much and Merry Christmas to you all. Good luck to all of our students on final season of Christmas Eve.